Mary Ann.
So, Mary Ann?
Yes?
Okay, so we're gonna leave you unmuted, and then if any... And if Peter comes on, we'll leave him unmuted also, so you can talk at any time.
Okay.
So just be aware of that, you know? We're more worried about Peter with where he is. So make sure that volume was all the way up.
Can you guys see me now?
I see you, Peter.
I see Peter.
Got it. I got her done.
Oh, good. Wow, there we go, first time.
Calling in from Mexico.
All the city of the city council meeting agenda for Thursday, October 14, 2021, ordered at 6:30 PM. The city council meeting is in person or via teleconference or via Zoom, pursuant to Senate Bill AB 361. The meeting will be held in person and via teleconference electronically. In person participation by the public is permitted, and remote electronic public participation is also available on ways. You can join us on Zoom with the ID of 81033497346, and that's with a passcode of 456407. Members of the public participating electronically via this link and wishing to speak may do so during public comment by using the raise hand feature on the Zoom webinar. Join the meeting telephonically by calling the number 1978-990-5000 and entering the code 550802. Members of the public using this comment feature and wishing to speak may do so during public comment. During public comment period, submit a written public comment card prior to the meeting. Email public comment cards can be submitted to Deputy State Corrector's email list at 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Comments will be submitted to City Council, made part of official meetings. Go call.
Councilmember Stennis.
President.
Councilmember Kleinfelter here. Councilmember Ackerman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Amoruso.
Here.
Mayor White.
Here.
Thank you.
If we can stand for the flag slip. By doing this, to the flag of the United States of America, in two republics, which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice law. I know we don't have any vocation, but I just have something to say. I'm sorry for your dog, this gang go darts. So approval of the city council regular meeting agenda of October 14, 2021.
I'm like full item 5.2 in the consent counter and have it agendaized and such to the mayor, whether he wants to put ahead of the regular agenda items or afterwards.
I'd also like, I'd also like to see that item move to the regular part of the agenda.
So is that a first and a second on that?
We don't need a first and a second. Any council member can pull anything from the consent agenda or a regular.
Okay, you know, we had a motion.
Yeah, yeah. So you put it wherever you want.
We'll start off on the regular agenda items.
So give the number again.
Okay, well, well, actually, it would probably be easier if we made it. We'll go to the end, I'm sorry. If we made it 7.5.
One small thing in the, in the, in the mess.
Okay.
No, we're not there yet.
Not there yet, okay.
We're on the agenda.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
Under the, I approve the agenda as corrected, minted.
I'll second that.
And now we have a first and a second.
We'll call it right. Councilmember Stennis.
Aye.
Councilmember Kleinfelter.
Aye.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Amoruso.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment under Government Code Section 54954. Three citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker's supplemental form to the city. Or for items on the agenda, speakers will be called out to the podium by the mayor. At the point on the agenda when items will be heard, speakers are encouraged to come to three minutes or less and state name and community of residence. Under provisions of California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any items not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or in urgent need to take immediate action or rose out with posting of the agenda. Is there anyone here at City Hall? Or I'm gonna open public comment now. Is there anyone here at City Hall that would like to speak during public comment? Okay, I'm gonna go to the telephone. Hello, telephone, is there anyone on the telephone who'd like to speak during public comment? Going once, going twice. Okay, is there anyone on Zoom? Use the raise your hand button. If you'd like to speak during public comment. Okay, we're gonna go back around. Is there anyone here at City Hall that would like to speak during public comment? Okay, back to the telephone. Is there anyone on the telephone that would like to speak during public comment? Okay, back to Zoom. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak during public comment? Okay, is there any emails, texts? Carrier pigeon? Okay. And I got my time covered.
You did a good job.
Make sure, okay. That's new stuff, okay. I am going to close public comment down now. Presentations, proclamations, and appointments, there are none. It can set calendar, hold back, too.
I have one amendment to, and I know council members can also ask correction to the minutes. On item number five of the minutes, we specifically made, when we made the motion about the consent agenda, it was with the change from item number five, and the word funding changed to grant. And that is not reflected in the minutes. It was, we, it was part of a discussion that the reason for using that were, was that the Rotary would receive the funds and was a responsible party for providing receipts and final report. So just grant instead of funding grant. Thank you.
And councilmember Stennis, you had?
Yes, my name is listed under the, there's four votes in regards to the environmental impact review. And it showed myself as voting yes in here. There's, there's five names here, only four yeses, but I'm one of them. I just removed my name from that line. I think that'd be great.
I also think that the, the minutes should reflect just for the future because it's a large project. The minutes should reflect that council members can recuse themselves.
She says that at the beginning. I'm sorry, these are, we're gonna take these notes and fix this. At the beginning, that's not about that. We've talked since that when it comes down to the votes, they're using the word abstain, we're gonna put recuse. Then put one extra one. We're just trying to make it as clear as we can. I will say. Yeah. Right when they, yes, the other thing is just, I wanna kinda. I wanna do this for Maria. We had the meeting on Thursday. We have another council meeting. She had a hybrid thing by Monday and we have met and we talked about, uh, the system for keeping track. There are too many little errors that take place and they're usually don't affect the outcomes, but it's important that they be accurate. And so, uh, we have a new way to keep track. Give them shots. So thanks for pointing things out to us in a timely way. And we've had some calls from, uh, other council members, uh, prior to saying, hey, did you know this and that? So let let me learn. Uh, for that time, especially if you're doing a meeting right from Thursday to Monday. And I don't think that it's that just. So, you know, we'll make the changes that apply to that for sure.
And that is one of the reasons that I did a Friday recap. Um, an email to staff, the attorney, just going over what my recollection from the night before was. So I think that would be helpful as well for Maria.
Yeah, we appreciated your 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 vision of what that was. What we are doing is we're gonna rely upon not individual council members recollection. Uh, we actually today, some of the questions that came up through an email, we listened to the tape. That's the only record that really is accurate on it right now. So I think you'll see, I believe, a change in how minutes are produced and so so thanks for all your help.
I am, I noticed a couple of things on on the minutes. Um. Item four for the public hearing. When it refers to, uh, John Colburn speaking, it says John Colburn referenced previous LAFCO comment letter submitted. Um, I thought that the letter that he submitted was not regarding LAFCO, but it was regarding the E. I. R. And I could be mistaken. There could be a LAFCO letter that I'm. Not familiar with, but I thought his letter he was referring to had to do with the E. I. R. He, the other thing.
Mary Ann, while you're while you're on that subject, just because I in, not to interrupt, but I also thought it was for the, um. It was the water and then, um. Why am I? But yeah, that, sorry, I wronged talk over to it. I think it was he was simply referring to the letter that he had previously submitted in the council. To refer his own letter covered a lot of things related to the Greenwich project, as I recall. Um, that's that's my.
Well, I think that Mary Ann's point is well taken that if you use in the minutes just the reference to LAFCO, then it could be confusing in the future. That it was, so it needs to say in left in general reference to the E. I. R. For initial study.
And since everybody else got to say something, I listened to, Mary Ann had sent an email to the state clerk with her concerns about these comments. So I listened to the audio tape, Mary Ann, and all the items that are listed are in the order that John mentioned. Here's a brief synopsis of what it was. So it is accurate, same goes with Mr. Wise. So both of those I listened to the tape and they're there. Could we elaborate more on maybe a few more words we can clear? Yes, one thing we are changing that will take place the next time around is that at the beginning of the, uh. Anything where there's like some speaks, we're going to make a a reference and a link so people can read it. And they can click the link and they can go to the actual audio page and listen to the tape. So there's no interpretation. It's really what these guys said. So thank you for pointing that out earlier and trying to make that back.
The the other thing that I had I had emailed Maria about was speaking of Jim Wise that. My recall and I I appreciate what you just said, but just Rex, but just so the other council, the rest of the council knows what I was thinking was that. It was my recall that it it's not that he was questioning if SEQA applied, but that he was questioning. Uh, if there should be two separate E. I. Rs. Um, anyway, just my two cents.
Okay. And it looks like Peter's running. Um. I'm sorry, I I'm having a tough time. Do we have public comment now during during, even now with the the new? Well, that's right, we're opening up. Having a difficult, I can, I'm sorry, guys. Um, okay, what's the wishes of council? We have a motion.
If I make a motion to approve the consent counter as amended, the changes were in item number five, change the word funding to grant. That was instructed in the meeting under the, um, discussion of the E. I. R. Though remove council member Sims' name from the yes votes, mentioned that he recused himself. And under Mr. Coburn, change the word LAFCO to general E. I. R. discussion.
I think so.
I think I got it.
You did.
To make sure. There you go. That's all you need. Okay.
We'll call vote. Councilmember Simmons.
Hi.
Councilmember.
Hi. Hi.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Amoruso.
Peter, I don't know if you can hear us, but you're on mute and you can leave yourself off mute.
Hi.
There you go.
Mayor White.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, public hearings, there is none. Regular agenda items, uh, seven point one, resolution two thousand twenty-one dash eleven. Declaring the purpose and the need for a rural exemption for from organic waste collection requirements specified in S. B. thirteen eighty-three regulations.
Uh, council, mayor, council, this is a simple one. We're basically because of our size of our community, we're less than seventy thousand people. Um, we are exempt from this, but we have to bring it forward, uh, to you folks, uh, for a resolution. Agreed that we are exempt from this report. As a side movement basis does take care of these things, they are also. The county recycling coordinator also sets some things that are required. So that's me. Just build this resolution so we can send it to Cal Recycle.
Okay, I'm gonna go to public comment first. Is there anyone, I'm opening public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to speak during public comment on this issue? Okay. Is there anyone on the telephone that would like to speak during on this issue during public comment? Okay. I'm gonna go to Zoom. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak during public comment on this issue? Use the raise your hand button. Okay, I'm gonna go back around. Is there anyone here at city hall that would like to speak during public comment on this issue? Okay. I wanna.
Yep, push that little button right there. Tell us who you are and where.
Hi, my name is Chantel Crowley and I came tonight to see my civic council members are. I recently purchased a property here in Plymouth and a building down the street. And I want to get to know who my members are up here. And I was wondering, is there a route that you get to the public who come in so I can follow your name?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Is we're gonna go back to the telephone. Is there anyone on the telephone that would like to speak during public comment? Is there back to Zoom? Is there anyone that would like to speak during public comment on Zoom? Okay, I'm gonna close public. Oh, no. Is there any text messages, emails?
No.
I'm gonna close public comment and. Comments, questions, concerns, councilmembers. Questions, comments, concerns, councilmember Kleinfelter.
I have this storm of business and not talking.
Um, councilmember Ackerman, Ackerman, questions, comments, concerns.
No questions, comments or concerns on this.
Okay, and councilmember Amoruso, questions, comments, concerns.
Nothing.
And I don't either. So, um, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash eleven. Declaring the purpose and need for a rural exemption from the organic waste collection requirements specified in S. B. thirteen eighty-three regulations.
We'll call vote. Councilmember Simmons.
Hi.
Councilmember Kleinfelter.
Hi.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Amoruso.
Hi.
Mayor White.
Hi.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to seven point two. And now introducing in way first reading by title only ordinance two thousand twenty-one dash zero one, meaning section one four. Dot zero eight dot zero nine zero of the Plymouth municipal quote code authorizing city to adopt, uh, future new or increased rates for sewer services fees. And charges by resolution. Yes, good evening, mayor, councilmembers. Um, this, this, um. Uh, this, this is a importance is the first reading, uh, introduction and first reading of this ordinance, which would modify a section of municipal code. To allow the city to adopt water rates, uh, new or increased water rates. Um, this will not affect current water rates that are currently applied in the city. Uh, now those will be allowed to be passed by a resolution. Um, it doesn't preclude the city from also passing them by ordinance. It just gives the city, uh, extra flexibility. It, um. Particularly to be very candid in this situation where A. W. A. Has given us very limited period of time in which to pass rates. Um, and so in order to be able to, uh. Go through that process efficiently, uh, in a time of time of top time effective matter, this gives us that flexibility. Um, this is consistent with state law, which the whole safety code was amended in two thousand seventeen to allow cities to do this. Um, part of the legislative attempt from the state was to allow cities like Plymouth to be able to pass the water rates. Um, a little bit more expeditiously, especially consideration of all the Prop two eighteen requirements, which do require noticing, et cetera. Again, this is really only intended to allow the city to, uh, pass the rates in a quicker manner. As you know, the municipal ordinance resolution, uh, for the public's benefit, also I know this council is aware, it requires, uh, uh. It goes to the council one time and it goes to two facts right away. It doesn't require another thirty days. Yeah, especially when it comes to water rates, which there's already a forty-five day notice in advance. I think that was the that was the state legislatures, uh, all of those factors, that we made in the state legislatures. Um. The legislative intent made pass this law two thousand seventeen, which allows us to do it. So in turn, we're just, um. We're checking that option here, um, and that's the that's the intent. Again, this does not affect current rates. Okay, I'm gonna open up public comment. Is there anyone here at city hall that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, I'm gonna go to the telephone. Is there anyone on the telephone that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, I'm gonna go to Zoom. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak on this matter? Use the raise your hand button. Okay, I'm gonna go back here to city hall. Is there anyone that would like to speak here at city hall on this matter? Okay, back over to the telephone. Is there anyone on the telephone that would like to speak on this matter? And one more time back to Zoom. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this matter on Zoom? Use the raise your hand feature. Okay, and is there any text emails?
No.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment. Councilmember Simmons, questions, comments, concerns.
It's my understanding, uh, that this just cuts down red tape, the time it takes to adopt new new race whatever the future. It's just, it's all. There's nothing here. This is a change today. So, okay, thank you.
Okay, questions, comments, concerns, councilmember Kleinfelter.
Uh, I first of all, I'd like to ask Frank, since this is a waiting on the first reading. Do we have to have a public comment in a public hearing in order to actually change?
We do not. This is a text that I have a term municipal code. If it were affecting a water rate fee, for example, or other others, I mean, in so many decisions, other specified ordinance changes. It would be a public hearing in those cases, but this is purely a text amendment within our municipal code. Um, and it doesn't change, but doesn't change the current rates. It just says that the city in the future may, it doesn't have to, they may adopt rates by resolution.
I I'm. A bit concerned about that because. Um, it takes away some of the public's ability to engage in the conversation. They will not have the same public hearing notices for rate changes that they would have already had. And I think the optics of knowing that we're gonna have to change rates and doing this now is a terrible optic for the public. And just because we legally can do something, doesn't mean we always should.
Okay, questions, comments, concerns, councilmember Ackerman.
I, um, I I also have a question for you, Frank, and I. Apologize if you already spoke to this. I'm kind of having a, it 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 it's a little bit hard for me to hear you. Maybe, uh, if you would be kind enough to get a little closer to the microphone, but I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around understanding. What is meant by, um, waiving the first reading by title only. Do you? Would you mind explaining that to me again? I don't quite get it.
Yeah, absolutely. Can can you hear me better?
That is better. Thank you.
Okay. Um, yeah, this that language, uh, regarding introducing, obviously, area of normalness requires an introduction and then second reading. In order to, um, um. The government code specifies that the ordinance, um, and in this case, all two pages, um, would ordinarily have to be read in its entirety. Unless the council waves, uh, the entire reading, uh, by by reading the title only instead. And that's that option is explicitly allowed in the government code. Um, as a practical matter, every ordinance that I've done in this city has been that way and every so every, every ordinance that I've seen in every other city, including other cities I've worked with have done that way. I would describe it as a pretty routine. Um, uh, procedure just because it saves literally reading into the record a two-page ordinance, because the ordinance is not just. The subsection that's added in the municipal code, it's all of the recitals, um, all of the sequel findings, um, the whole thing. And so it's really just to save some time.
Okay, thank you. That helps. Um, and then I just also also want to say that, uh, uh, the council member, uh, Kleinfelter's, uh, comments that I. I share those concerns. Um, I look at this as, um, this. From if I'm understanding this correctly, it 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 does make a process quicker and, uh, like councilmember Sims said. Um, reduces red tape. But at the same time, it it does seem like it minimizes the, um, the the opportunities for the public. To 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 really be in involved, um, or and to have ample time. I I know for me how how difficult and challenging it can be when something comes up. And we have, we have, you know, three days notice to to read through a lot of this. So so that that's my that's my concern on on this one. So, so that, that's my, that's my concern on, on this one.
Okay, questions, comments, concerns, councilmember Amber Russo?
Well, this is a difficult one, and I don't disagree that on some level optics is an issue, as I think we've all seen this week. My concerns are that we need to look at the bigger picture here, and this is not necessarily any way of stopping the people from being able to be involved in the process. This is a precursor to eventually doing 218. And this is just the groundwork part of pushing this forward, and it's, you know, and again, to cut the red tape. And, and, and it's not, it's, you know, and, and fear mongering has happened, and I don't think that that's fair to the people either, because that's not giving them the whole story. And, you know, they're supposed to come to our meetings, or Zoom, we give all these new options and, you know, abilities for them to be involved in this process. So, you know, I think, I think for me, it's very clear, this is not stepping in on anyone's abilities. It's, it's just trying to streamline the process, which is, you know, what we're about, and, you know, trying to streamline our government. And, you know, again, it lays the groundwork for, for the future of what we're gonna have to do due to what AWA is doing to us. So, I want to be really clear about that, this is nothing that we're personally as a council doing to do anything to the people. This is about doing the right thing for the people, because we know a process is coming our way. So, that's, that's what I really want to be clear about. That's all I got.
Um, can I just add something here, just to?
Can I, is it okay if I put my comments out there real quick, and then, it might help that to? Because I look at, and I see very clear on both sides, and I see both sides of this argument, very clear. The timing on this couldn't be worse, and my, in all honesty, I mean, they put it blunt. But I do, but I'm a very much, streamline anything, but streamline. So, I definitely want two cents I wanted to put out there.
So, to add to your two cents, what we have to do with AWA to reach water rates, it doesn't matter if you pass this tonight or you go, the ordinance way, it stills gonna happen, we're not gonna change it. The big difference will be, is that we're going to probably end up eating several months' worth of water bills increases. We will, we as a city will have to pay those bills, we won't be able to pass it on, pass through as it's designed. So, wherever you're choosing this is fine, we're not gonna remove anything from the 218 process, that's a whole nother process that is very public. So, this is to allow us to, like, at least two of the councilmembers said, streamline. That's not the first time this council's done this, so you know, we did this also in 2014. Prior to my role, I hold many of you, in 2014, they felt the same thing, but it was for, we didn't have water, then it was sewer. So, they did the exact same thing we're doing right now to pass it. And so, if we have a sewer rate increase, we don't go through the ordinance, we do it by resolution. So, it's not new to the community, but it's whatever we like to do, just know there's some, we will, in the end, pay some money for waiting, and public can still have their input, so, it's, it's your wishes at this point, we appreciate it, if you're interested in talking about it.
And I totally understand exactly where you're coming from, Rex, on that. With that being said, we've had previous councilmembers who promised lower water rates, and we've had previous things going on and on and on, and that's what makes this, you know, you mentioned it clear, I never ever thought we were gonna get lower water rates, but, you know, that's a big topic in this community, it's a big problem.
It's, it's one of the largest topics, is water and sewer. Convincing people that the largest portion of them now is that service on the sewer
Yeah.
is a very difficult proposition. But I would argue, what is the, what is the cost of losing transparency? And are we gonna do that at the expense of the public who opens up their mail without realizing that a new resolution was passed? And they get a very merry Christmas in these times. So, I, I've had, I'm having a really difficult times with, with how this is coming down. And the timing seems to be, to be, and it's been admitted here, that it's intentional. And instead of it's something, an action that we took preemptively before we were pushed against the law.
I think Frank might be able to explain one more element.
Yeah, obviously, like Frank said, this is a total council decision. I don't, I think, so from staff's perspective, we wanted to make sure you knew this was an option, because we didn't want to be positioned where if we were heating water rates for a month or two or longer, the question would raise, well, why did we look at expedited process? So, that's what this is intended to do. That being said, for the public's benefit, if not the council, Prop 218 still requires a 45-day public comment period and notice process and a public hearing to boot just for that process alone. So, it's not a question of, at least, a lengthy public comment period at a public hearing versus not. It's really a question of, and again, this may be more for the benefit of the, of the public, but it's really a question of one meeting where a resolution is up for discussion and adoption versus two meetings where an ordinance is up for discussion and adoption. Neither of those, both of those would require a public hearings. It's just a question of one versus two meetings. Again, Prop 218 does provide an ample amount of notice under the Prop 218 process. I think that's gotta be another thing that informed state legislature when they amended law in 2017 to allow this, because they knew Prop 218 was a great counterbalance to that. Again, this is completely council decision, I agree with what Rex said. But, and, and, and I guess I would also say, it absolutely was intentional for staff to bring this to the council tonight. It wasn't intentional because it was trying to hide the fact that we're trying to expedite this process because we have water rates coming. It's, there, there's nothing, there's nothing alternative, ulterior, or under the table as far as that goes. It was simply done in order to provide the option in light of this impending short notice we have by way of our contract with AWA. So, it's to give this council options, it's not hiding the ball that this is for that eventual water rate change. But it's to make sure at least we have all of our bases covered in options. So, just wanted to make sure council considered that as well.
So, I, I'd like to comment if I can, and, and again, Frank, thank you for that explanation, and I'll be the first one to admit that I am, I am not well-versed, that, that's, that's putting it mildly, in Prop 218. And some of you may have noticed by now that I, I like to research things before I make a decision. So, I, I, you know, I, I would like a little more time, and, you know, not a lot of time, but I also am looking at the staff report, and I'm wondering about the fiscal impact, and, you know, it says none. In the future, the city may have reduced administrative expenses. And I'm, I'm wondering if Rex, or Michael, or whoever, if you could just elaborate a little bit on what that, more information on the fiscal impact, one way or another, what, yeah, one way or another, I'm gonna leave it at that.
All right. This staff report relates only to the time it takes to prepare a resolution and versus that of the time it takes to prepare an ordinance. We'll have a cost savings, obviously, with the resolution, because of time, staff time, so that's what happens. That has no bearing on another aspect of fiscal impact. That's pretty much a standard stock order we keep there, but there is no impact at this point, we're gonna do the job either way. So, it's gonna happen, whichever you guys decide we have to do, so it's just, there's no impact, it will happen, there's no cost savings to that direction, it's time.
Thank you.
If Prop 218 is dragging this out because of the 45-day comment period anyway, I'm, I'm wondering what the urgency is of doing it in this manner now, rather than going through the process that we have on the books, and then coming and revisiting this issue after we've already gone through that process. So, it's, so the optics have changed, because it doesn't look like we're trying to lessen transparency.
Okay. Well, I'm getting really tired of hearing about transparency, we're the most transparent the city's ever been in its history. I'm getting a little frustrated with this whole scene. You know, there's no bugaboos, no one's doing anything to hurt anyone here. This is, this is all me and Don to, again, keep kicking this candle on the road on every subject that comes in. We talk about these things, we're having public meetings at all points for everything, no one's hiding anything from anyone. You know, if you look at all the comments on Facebook, they're there. You know, if they want to be transparent, they, they, they come to the meeting. Where they get the facts. I'm sorry, you know?
For, for me, for me personally, I'm not suggesting that anybody is trying to be underhanded, or try to, try to reduce transparency. But what I'm, what I'm, what I'm concerned about is that by doing this, is, is that an unintended consequence? I'm, I'm not suggesting that this is, you know, but done intentionally, but when, I, I think that when we, when we make a decision, we, we need to look at unintended consequences.
Believe me, I agree 1,000%.
Yeah.
And part of being on council, and why we do what we do. You know, and it's negated, I get it, I'm not, I'm not accusing you of anything. That's not where I'm coming from, from this, on this.
Right.
So, I'm sorry if that's how you perceive that, that's not where I was coming from. It's just frustration, because I see all this stuff going on, and it's, 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 it's very laborious at times, because when you know the facts, and I'm?
And Peter, can I, can I mention something real quick on all this? The thing is, is the things that you, you brought up, which I totally agree with, and you know that I totally agree with this, the, the thing that I see in this, and it doesn't matter what any of the rest of the wording sees in it, it's that water service fees. That's gonna be, that's gonna be a hard one.
Right, optics is right.
Because of the fact of, like I said, promises made by previous council members, and, I mean, this goes, you know, 10, 15, 20 years ago. So, I, that's why I guess I'm so with my, you know, I guess kid gloves with this one, and totally agree with Mary Ann. Let's not do something that affects something that we unfortunately, or we don't recognize at the moment. Not saying that, I totally understand the streamlined process of this.
I wanted to mention for Mary Ann's benefit, that this will have to come back at the next future meeting. So, there is an opportunity to, to do more research. This, when you want to change an ordinance, then you have to have this first, wait with this first reading, and then have a second full reading of the ordinance. So, there is at least a two-week period of time to study the issue.
Yeah, that's exactly right, only I would say is, it wouldn't be a full reading that either, I don't think that's what you meant, you just meant it'll come back for adoption, for discussion, it has to come to the council twice. And if I may just answer the question that council member Kleinfeldter asked before, saying it's a good question, and I want to clarify, so the council can make as far a decision as possible. The reason why we can't run these parallel is because we cannot put, we have to complete the Prop 218 process starting, complete that before we can bring anything to this council for adoption. And if, so if we did that, let's say that process ends in December-ish, I'm not exactly sure when, and then we can take something to council, then it will require two readings, and then this ordinance, because I can't justify it as an emergency ordinance, would have required two readings, and then would have to wait 30 days to go into effect. So, that's, the 30 days, that really, you know, is the time, is the time thing, is the time. So, it can't be run in parallel, we have to Prop 218, then the ordinance, as opposed to the Prop 218, then the resolution.
Frank, can I please have a flow chart on that?
That wasn't clear? When Rex said that was clear, I had a sense you'd be sarcastic.
No, I just, I'm just, I'm just a little more visual, but, but thank you, and thank you, Valerie, that helps to know about the second reading, and I'm gonna say it again, I'm new to this.
Okay, any more questions, comments, concerns from the council? Okay, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to waive the second reading, or the first reading, and unfortunately, I don't have all the verbiage in front of me, because I'm on the screen, I can't see the rest of it, so, could someone help me with this a little bit?
It's, you're gonna waive first reading of ordinance 2021-01?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to waive, sorry, oh, sorry.
Councilmember Ackerman?
No.
Vice Mayor Marusso?
I.
Mayor White?
I'm gonna go with I, just because I know we have a second reading on it.
Okay, 7.3, review of draft RFP for EIR consultant real project.
Are you gonna be, I'll text you?
I'll come back.
Oh, okay, all right, I'll call me, okay.
But find out the score for us.
Can the minutes reflect that councilmember Sam has recused himself for seven? I think that would be helpful.
Okay, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, City Council, so before you tonight is the draft request for proposal for the EIR consultant for the real estate branch, 49er, Arby Village, major expansion project. So, as you remember, last week, the city council accepted staff's recommendation for an EIR for this project, and asked that, can we bring back a draft request for proposal? So, attached to this staff report is the draft RFP, and also a draft professional service agreement. So, that is the contract that will be signed between the city and the consultant, just the next step in this process, after the draft has been accepted, and the council authorizes me to distribute the RFP, which hopefully will, tonight, the draft is acceptable, we'll get it out in the next week or so. We have about a 30-day turnaround for proposals to come back into, to City Hall for review, so staff will review and evaluate proposals, select the most qualified applicant out of the proposals we received, and bring that back to City Council for review and an authorization of a professional service agreement with that consulting firm. I know a couple of the other issues of interest that came up at the last meeting were the, the date of the scoping meeting. Last meeting, I believe, I said it would probably be within the next six to eight weeks, after some thought and discussion with other staff members, I think it's best to wait until we get the consultant on board to hold that second scoping meeting, just so they are there to hear the comments, receive the comments, instead of us as staff taking them and then relaying them to that consultant. And then at that point, they can start to act as the base of this advisory sort of view for that project, it'll kind of be their introduction to the community too. So, that, if we follow this timeline, that second scoping meeting would be at the beginning of next year. I can answer any questions about this?
I'm gonna go public first, if that works. Anyone here from the public that would like to speak on this matter? Is there anyone on the telephone that would like to speak on this?
Is there anyone on the telephone that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, I'm gonna go to Zoom. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak on this matter? Use the raise your hand button. Okay, um, we'll go back to here at city hall. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, back to the telephone. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this matter? One more time at Zoom and use the raise your hand button if you'd like to speak. Okay, is there any emails, text?
No, your honor.
Okay, I'm gonna close public comment. Councilmember Kleinfelter, questions, concerns, comments?
I just wanted to thank, because it has only been a week, I wanted to thank Frank and Erin for getting this included in tonight's meeting. I also appreciated having the professional service, draft professional service agreement attached. It seems very boilerplate to me. So it's, you know, it's the normal professional services agreement. What I was most concerned, well, last time, Mary Ann Ackerman and I both expressed concerns about um, spreading the net far and the distribution list. So I did reach out to, my daughter-in-law is an architect, a project manager for a large firm in Davis, and asked her for environmental consultant names. And I have one so far, which I'll forward to you in the morning. And they are in Elrod Hills, so it's very close.
They asked me, and with that comment, making sure we're reaching out to a variety of firms, I have a list of the eight or nine firms. I know at least one firm on um, the list is confirmed, like a woman-owned firm. So I know that was a vote for us to make sure we're getting into all types of firms. So, thank you very much.
Councilmember Ackerman, questions, comments, concerns?
Um, just, just my comments are, uh, you know, this is the first RFP for an EIR that I've ever read and I, I uh, did not read it in its entirety. But I, I, I took a pretty good look at it and it looks um, uh, not, not that I'm an expert in this area, but it looks very thorough. And like um, Valerie said, I, I thought what, what was even quite frankly more impressive was the, uh, I appreciated that there was attached the professional services agreement. Um, and it was just nice to see how thorough uh, that is. Um, and, and again, just, uh, just to reiterate, uh, reiterate that I would like to see that net cast far and wide to make sure that there are a, a number of organizations that have an opportunity. Um, and if I, if I, if you don't mind me um, suggesting that uh, i- if this could be, if the RFP could be put in some type of trade organization or, or something, if, if that's possible. Um, but otherwise, I have no other questions and I appreciate the thoroughness. Thank you.
Uh, councilmember Ann Maruso, questions, comments, concerns?
I've got nothing. Thank you very much. I think it was handled well and I think it was amazing that it got done so quickly. So thank you guys for all your hard work. That's all I got.
Okay, and I have no comments. So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the draft RFP for distribution.
I'll second, I'll second.
Aye.
Councilmember Ackerman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Maruso?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye.
Thank you, that's perfect.
Okay, seven point four, last letter regarding the sphere of influence related to AFDD and um, yeah, we're gonna hold up until council member Sam.
Return.
Return.
Can I tell them what building you bought?
Sure.
Uh, she purchased the Chinese building.
Okay.
It's a very nice old building.
Excited.
Very special.
I can't figure that much, she pointed down.
Not much else for sale.
Well, it's also had very nice owners for a very long time.
Was that?
It's had very nice owners for a very long time.
Little Bangs?
Yes.
I don't know that one. But I'm gonna know.
You'll get to know them.
Are you leaving there? Thank you. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Erin.
I'm gonna email you in the morning. That's what I was looking through here. If you, if I had it quick, I would have done it right now. Yeah, I appreciate that.
All right, yes, she has, uh, she lives out in county and she has a sixty-three acre, a wretched block. She's won't be doing anything, she says, for a couple of years.
With them starting.
Devin, he's not getting out of the truck at all.
He's in the middle of walking.
I'm a little jelly.
See what's serious. I think Michael could do it. He said that he could. Maybe, maybe after, after the meeting. And then we can all leave during, during a recess. So what's the score?
Oh, that's not good.
Three to three?
What's the score? Charles, I have a pair of doubts.
All right, and we'll get this done in a couple of seconds.
Okay. Back at it, seven point four, last letter regarding this here influence related to AFDD.
Uh, also just to note that council member Sam is back in the building and active. So the, this is a last letter, the last council meeting, uh, the council's direction, council member Ackerman and council member Kleinfelter will represent the city on the twenty-eighth of October, uh, at the last one, which uh, will, won't be by Zoom, any person, so folks know. As requested, council member Ackerman, this is placed on the agenda so the council themselves can look at the letter, which crafted by the two council members. Um, I did call the executive director and I think this is a good move that this is the, done ahead of time. That's the meeting that they have on the twentieth is a continuation of a public hearing. And we all know that anytime that they were to take action during continuation, uh, they could vote. So adding this presented ahead of time is a good move. The letter is attached. Um, I think we're asking that you review it as council members and give your approval to it. The only change that someone had mentioned to me is possibly the official name for a, for chairman instead of Pat using his real name, Patrick. The other changes that were sent, after we sent to us was just some wording on the garbage code as to how it needed to be worked. It's a good letter, says what I think we, Ben and I had said before, so good job.
Okay.
I've just noted forever, so I've not, never noted, but Pat.
Um, we're gonna go ahead and open up public comment. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, we're gonna go to the telephone. Is there anyone on the telephone that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, and we're gonna go to Zoom by using the raise your hand button. If you'd like to speak, raise your hand now. Okay, back here to city hall. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, back to the telephone. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this matter? And back to Zoom by using the raise your hand button. If you'd like to speak, raise your hand now. Okay, um, is there any text?
Your honor.
Okay, then I'm gonna close public hearing. Questions, comments, concerns, council member Sam. Most good, says it all. Councilmember Kleinfelter?
I, I just wanted to thank Jeff for getting on here so quickly because we, you know, I think we, it, the illusion was during last Thursday's meeting that there would, that the twenty-eighth would ease up being a workshop. And the way they posted it and, and publicized it, that may not necessarily be the case. So taking this action tonight is very important.
Councilmember Ackerman, questions, comments, concerns?
Uh, my only comment is I, you know, uh, support the letter, uh, and, and, and also thank you to uh, Rex and Maria for getting, and, and you also, Mayor White, for getting this on the agenda at kind of the last minute. We, we know you, you're busy enough, so thank you.
Okay, questions, comments, concerns, council member Ann Maruso?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Do we need a motion to approve this letter?
Yes.
So I'll make that, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the letter. Yeah, present it to LaFco.
Do I have a second?
I will second that. Do we need to include, including the motions for the mayor's signature?
No, I think it's, it's part of the, uh, it's part of the agenda item descriptions.
Ralph Alvo? Councilmember Simmons?
Aye.
Councilmember Kleinfelter?
Aye.
Councilmember Ackerman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Maruso?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Okay, going back and moving uh, five point two to seven point five. Renewal of Akron kids after school program agreement with city of Plymouth for two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two school year in the amount not to exceed a king zero zero zero.
Mayor, council, this is something that's brought back every year. Uh, the Akron program takes place at Lashville, which we charge them uh, costly then to use them. So they just, things, housekeeping wise and stuff. Now, we are requesting that you go ahead and approve the eighteen thousand dollars, knowing that there's four thousand five hundred dollar credit left over because of COVID. Last year, they just had to stop the program, instead of returning the cash, they kept it on the books. That would be deducted from there, uh, from the eighteen thousand. Uh, through just their accounting. Is that send us a monthly report of how many kids are there and things like that? The only big difference in this this year is that, that in discussion uh, with the director, they have a new director at Akron. We thought he might be here tonight, but um, we are administering a five dollar attendance fee per child. But there's a clarification on that if you read the compensation section A, the second page. That is purely up to Akron way. They can waive every one of them or not. And it's because we have had in the past conversations with uh, citizens and people attend that staff that were the only cities in the past that a hundred percent gave it. Other cities that have the Akron program actually charge a fee, there's not a way they can charge a fee to attend. We also have had in the past where we've had kids attend this, they're really like a drop off and they need, the parents aren't being held more accountable for it. So they thought if they had a financial investment, the parents might say, you need to stay here. Uh, that's all of them how they managed that. Both the things were brought up. We said no problem with adding five dollars to their attendance. As long as it don't restrict any child from clinic around here that can't afford it, they should have to pay it. And they agree. I think they do this through the free lunch programs, how they turn it. So they have, uh, if they're on the, the free lunch program through school, then obviously they have economic need. If I were to, I would venture, yes, probably won't be any, that will have to pay. But we put it in there because it's, it's uh, is a way to show them there's some ownership. We were very clear. And this is one of those programs that uh, I know the council has conversed with for a long time. So it's a good, it's a good thing. They're ready to start Monday. If you approve this, they're, they got kids ready.
Okay, I'm gonna open up public comment. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, going to the telephone. Is there anyone on the telephone that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, over to Zoom by using the raise your hand button. Um, if you'd like to speak, raise your hand. Okay, back to city hall. If there's anyone who'd like to speak on this matter? Back to the telephone. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this matter? And one last time in Zoom, if you'd like to raise your hand, raise your hand right now. Okay, and there's no text or email?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we're gonna close public comment. Councilmember Sims, questions, comments, concerns? I have none. Councilmember Kleinfelter, questions, comments, concerns?
Well, I pulled this because I thought even though there is information in here, it's mostly the recitals of the contract. And it lacks a lot of information. I thought that um, our finance director, now assistant city manager, could have done in the staff, included in the staff report where the money was coming from. If, if we funded this previously to the at this level, I looked through every agenda minutes for two thousand twenty, looking for the resolution. Or this had been done by resolution before. And either there's some meetings missing or we didn't. So I don't recall us spending eighteen thousand dollars on this program before, so I don't think this is ready for prime time. I think we have questions about how this program is normally funded through federal or state funding and not this, and not city funding. It's, there's a broad stroke of between five kids and twenty kids. So we don't have any control or definition of what the benefit area is. So there's just a lot of questions rather than a lot of answers and if this had been done during the budget process, things like this, then they wouldn't need to come to council because we've approved certain things in the budget process as a line item. If, if it's routine, then it could be, the resolution could have been put on consent. But since we didn't do that previously, it's no longer a routine action. So I just have a lot of concerns and I'd like more information.
There enough Michael sent or something or a piece?
No, I don't know if we have any. I mean, those are all good points. I uh, since I've been here, I can, I can tell you, we've had these discussions about it. So, and Michael didn't write the staff report. I, so all right, I, I listen to what you say. I, I, it's not my place to disagree or agree with you. If you have the information, these kids are waiting to join the program. If you wanna delay it, that's we want to do, but.
Okay, questions, comments, concerns, council member Ackerman?
Um, thank you. So, so my concern with this is um, and, and remember, I'm, I'm a public health nurse and a school nurse. So you, nobody has to convince me of the benefits of an after-school program. Uh, the benefits are, are well documented that uh, uh, after-school programs are, are good for kids socially, emotionally. They help reduce risky behavior, uh, beneficial to the kids and therefore beneficial to the community. So I support an after-school program. I think uh, council member Kleinfelter raises some very good issues and questions about the funding and that sort of thing. If, um, if, if the city has been doing this for so many years in the past, I would be supportive of it, but I, I would want us to have more discussions to see if we need to continue this. Uh, and, um, and, and, and look at, and look at some of those issues. But where I do. continue this and, and, and look at, look at some of those issues. But where I do have an issue with this and what I can't support, although, although after-school programs are so beneficial, and we all remember, we all know that we're living in a pandemic now, and COVID has hurt families financially and has increased the problems that we're seeing with mental health issues amongst families and more importantly, amongst children. So that's why I think having an after-school program that's accessible to everybody like it has been in the past is so important. So therefore, I object strongly to implementing the $5 fee at this time. Being we're in a pandemic, people are hurting financially, people are losing jobs and health insurance. And I, I realize that there are some people who would qualify for the free and reduced meals and therefore they wouldn't have to, to pay the $5. I realize that. It's the people who, who do make money, but they're above that threshold, but they're still struggling and they're having to make decisions. And I can tell you, as a school nurse, I see every day the financial impact it has on families. When, and, and when I was reading through this, if you have two children in this program and they're there four days a week, it could cost them $128 a month or 12, over $1,200 a year. I don't want to see a family have to decide between is their child going to be in this program or are they going to get a refill on their EpiPen that has expired? And those are the types of decisions I see every day. So I'm, I'm, I'm very opposed to the $5 fee. And at least at this time, at this, at this time, given our, you know, our, our current state of affairs with the pandemic and the financial hardships that people are already facing. So thank you.
Councilmember Amber Russo?
Well, yeah, this is a program near and dear to my heart. I actually championed and was part of the inception of doing this program and how it came to the city. Because I felt that our kids, for all the reasons that she just stated, were very important to our community. You know, lack their, lack of things for them to do after school, vandalism, you know, again, being out on the streets, you know, it gave them a place to go, it gave them a place to, you know, you know, be and do homework and interact and, you know, all those things. So I, I don't need to reiterate everything that, that, that she just said because those are all really valid, huge points. And when we made this and did this, we did it with the, the thought that it wouldn't cost the parents any kind of money because of, you know, we're, we do live in a community that is underserved. And so with that being said, I'm with, you know, the rest, you know, the other council members that, you know, stated the facts they've stated, that I don't need to reiterate all, all those facts, that, you know, putting that burden on them is, is probably not the best thing to do at this time. And it, it kind of compromises the program. The whole, the whole idea of the program was to create something for our community and, and, and the ability for those kids to go somewhere and be productive instead of destructive. So with that, I don't need to really, I think, preach anymore on that one. So, yeah, I would, I would state that I'm very clearly against $5 or anything. Because again, we, you know, this, this program started with $10,000 and it's crept up to $18,000 over the years, which is fine. And like I said, and we budgeted for it over the years to, for these increases of cost of, you know, the employees and, you know, the facility and, you know, all the parts and pieces that make this thing work. So let's, let's, let's look at, you know, the city absorbing that. If, if we have to bump it up, you know, it's only 20 kids. It's not like we're talking the thousand kids or 500 kids. But let's, let's figure out a way to make this work for our community and for our kids. And that's all I got.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
As you guys continue on through this, if the motion does come to head, it's, we can remove the $5 off. I mean, it's just a matter of taking a minute to go back and move it and whatever your wish it may be. Just so you know, that's an easy do.
It's funny, I was talking to, and when I look at things, I look at the county, we're all locals, of county, we're all locals. And I was talking to someone today, born and raised in the county, and he used the term, and I've used the term a million times and stuff. It takes a village to raise kids. And I know how important this program is to council, Councilmember Amber Russo. I can remember a few years back when we were having the same discussion and Mayor Burns is up here and we were talking about how Accra helped raise our children. And all three of us, me, Peter and Mr. Burns. So with that being said, knowing, I hate to bring the demographic up, the demographic, the, the children in this area, I think it's very important that we do waive that $5 if we go through and make a motion. And that's just my two cents. So.
Could I make a couple of comments? I want to make sure that everyone realizes and that I'm clear. I'm not opposed to the program. I'm opposed to not having the information where the money is coming from, what part of the budget is coming from, when was it planned? And, and the last thing I'm going to say is, do not accuse this council of delaying anything when, because this is going to go into effect tomorrow. This council didn't delay it. It didn't go on an agenda until tonight.
Okay. What's the wishes of the council?
You know, the, the only other, the only other comments that I want to make, and Peter, I would love to follow up with you later on this. And I've had the, the pleasure of recently meeting the, the new executive director for Accra, Justin Howard, who I, I thought was going to try to join us tonight, who just seems like a, a very nice young man. And just is, seems like somebody I would really enjoy working with. And I think it would be great to address the issues that Councilmember Kleinfelder has, has brought up. I, I think that's really important. But then also, Peter, in, in Rex's things that you said, if, if there's anything that as a council person I can do to, you know, to improve engagement or something in this program. I'm glad to hear that, that Peter has such a passion for it. And Peter, I'd love to talk to you more and learn about the history of it. And would, would love to do anything I can to, to support this. It sounds like it's your baby. And, and I think it's, it's great. So just, again, my two cents.
I think I might have a compromise. And it might not be necessary because everyone else probably wants to just move straight forward without the $5. But if we decided to fund the program for two months today, then the contract can go into effect. It's funded for the two months. And during that two months, we have a staff report come back with the information and the line item in the budget where this is coming from. And more information about the program, who are the beneficiaries, what has been the successes. We have, we need a report on, you know, we need the hands-on how this, because we have to answer to our constituents, we need to know in their storyline how this benefits the community. And that's the kind of thing I'm looking for.
I think that's a reasonable compromise. A reasonable solution.
So do we want to make a motion on that?
So I'll make a motion that we remove the part about the $5. Approve this for two months. And approve, approve the contract. Or approve the program agreement.
I second that.
Before you go forward, I think it's important, no, we don't have any meetings left. Maybe actually in two months, some of this program runs when school is out.
Make it three.
Can we set it up? I, I think I want to finish saying what I'm saying because I don't like to chew it up very easily. And I think it's real important that nothing but good things needs to come from this. And when this is given to the council on Monday, you have 72 hours to ask questions. We can get one question, Peter called and asked about the, the $5, or Anne had earlier, maybe not, not one email from any other council member or phone call saying, hey, can you have ready for the meeting some things I have questions for? Not one. So these kids are waiting and they did ask to put this on two months ago. And we couldn't get it on because the contract was wrong. We gave us a cool contract. There's things you don't know background wise. So you, we'll do what you asked because we work for it in a minute. You just need to, you ask about participation, maybe that three days if you can get it after we read it. Might be the time instead of embarrassing us in front of the rest.
No one is embarrassing anyone, but for the council to be admonished during meetings, and this is not the first time, is completely inappropriate.
So, so from what I understand, Accra sent a letter to the city at the end of July saying that they wanted to reinstate the program. That was almost three months ago. I know earlier, a couple of months ago, in an email I sent opposing the, the $5, but also saying that I, I would be open to learning about, you know, why is the $5 needed? And, you know, is, is there a compelling reason?
Well, and so can I kick in one other thing? You know, this, we did go through a budget not too long ago, and this was in the budget. So there was a line item in there for it. So this is not like it's just pulled out of the air and just all of a sudden appeared in front of us.
I, I also want to say, I think Rex brings up a very good point that, you know, we don't have a lot of meetings and we have the holidays and all that. So, so, so actually Valerie initially, I, while I agreed with your suggestion, after listening to what Rex said, I think that perhaps two months is, is not enough time. And, and, and perhaps it does, and, and for the sake of the kids and the parents, so they know they have something to count on for the remainder of the school year. I, I would be okay with seeing this be approved for this school year through, through June, whatever the dates were going to be. But we need to, to revisit some of these things. The funding.
So I'm going to resend my, my second. You'll probably have to resend your, and, and remit motion to that.
I'll resend my motion.
Can I make a motion? To approve the, the program and the stance for four year and removing $5?
To the end of school year?
For the year, the stance in, in the agenda.
Okay, cool.
So we have a first one?
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay.
Real call vote? Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Kleinfelder?
No.
Councilmember Ackerman?
Aye.
Fight Mayor Maruso?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passed. It's going forward.
Okay. Council staff communication, city manager for Portland.
Mayor Council, with your permission, I think that the Zoom meeting is going as we designed. All I agree to do, and we're going to stop using the phone, stop advertising that and just use that. We'll have the phone as a backup too, if we had to, for some technical reason. But this seems to be working. If everybody agrees, well, we'll just focus on that. Secondly, the water bills, when they come in, people may not realize that you can now do your pay your water bill and store online 100% without fees. We have people saying, well, you charge us a credit card fee. That, that was true. We, we took care of all that. So I just want to let people know that, that you can, no fee, you can work through your bank and pay it. You can do it through a credit card. There's some other ways. You have to answer a few questions, but it seems to be working well. And I want to thank Michael and Joyce for working so hard to get that done. Because that was a request way back when Mayor Burns was around and take that happen. So it's finally there. Next is Prop 68. We've mentioned it a couple of times to you. That is, there's a non-competitive grant for parks and reactives. We have, we're in the process of applying. You're going to see come to the council before, we have some deadlines. So in November, if we, during a special meeting or in December, you'll have in Prop 68 specifically, so you know, we're following up on a council action from 1986. 1986 council made, even did secret to do a park at, at the Lodge Hill. And part of that includes the tennis court and parking and all kinds of stuff. Well, we have gone through it and Lodge Hill still qualifies. But now we actually have a funding source back in 86. They had a wish list and never had any money. So now we are going to kind of pick that up, we'll bring it back to you. It's $170,000 to make that into a car click setting. Today we had a architectural, landscape architect come and see if it's feasible. And we will have made up for that meeting that we have to have a few, some 20,000 foot look at what this could look like for your direction and approval. So that's coming forward. We're going to be saying, we don't know the dates yet because we have the 30-day requirement for our new meeting blocks for the, for using Zoom. And that's what we'll be saying, a council meeting up in November, that will be Zoom only. We have to talk to Frank about some technical things with it, but, but it'll be Zoom. So everybody here could have your iPad and it's ready for Zoom. If not, ring it to us. We'll get it set up so it'll function for you in a Zoom manner. I don't have anything else. I think that's all my notes here. So, thank you very much.
But you had a pre-bid meeting. So I heard that went very well.
We did. We had a pre-bid meeting, but we've also extended the date. We're still waiting for the state to finish through on there. So I went to November 9th and we will, this is for the Shenandoah Federal Town Road, which is really Main Street up to the tank. We're ready. All right. We're just waiting for the state to catch up. We knew that might happen. When that happens, we'll bring back the, the, all the, all the drawings, all the stuff that goes with it, along with who we recommend as the contractor. So you guys will see it and approve it. So stay tuned for that. You know, as long as they'll honor it, we'll keep moving it until the state comes through. Thank you for reminding me of that. Anything else? No, that's it for me.
Okay, future items and city council members' reports. We're going to do it all in one shot. So Councilmember Sims?
Yes, I would like to recommend a future jet item that council send to representatives to Sacramento to meet with Senator Feinstein and Senator Padilla with their meeting with their legislative aides to discuss the water and silver line funds that we requested.
I want to add to that. And, and we got, we sent the letters off, like as you signed and told us to do, we've already got responses from two of the three. It's really good. Timing was good.
So to go with that one here.
Smart move. You know, that's what they say, a face to face is worth a lot more than an email. So I would recommend, we'll put that out on the next council agenda to have you guys figure out how to do that.
Obviously, you need to send two people. Are we going to see something from our new code, or some officers sometime down the road where he comes in and gives himself, brings him some kind of report, gives some kind of rundown, what we're looking at down the road, things he's working on, things he's changing within the code, so forth.
We can, we can do that. You want them to come here versus just giving you a citation at your house, right? Yeah, no, he's excited to do that. Scott Cunningham is doing a great job on our.
I'm quite impressed, by the way.
And we had that government outreach, which is called Go Plymouth. And that we introduced to everybody, which is a communications link to the city, which I think you'll all be impressed with. It'll definitely open up the ability to communicate and accountability. Thank you.
Any one more who'll comment? Jimmy Labanco and the Plymouth Foothills Rotary have been working very hard on a, on the Harvest Fest event coming up October 30th, Saturday, between two and dusk. I think this event is the wonderful event. Hope they're great in town, price retentive. Open grid and town, Friday ten. I think it'll be, uh, it'll be good for the community. Now there'll be no more grass, uh, pharmacy market and so forth. So I have.
Okay, Councilmember Kleinfeldter?
I wanted to piggyback on Doug's comments because Jamie is doing her, um, at Prospect Sellers, is doing her Thursday night music now for the community. So, um, wanted to mention that. And usually, um, food items along with the local food, wine and, and music. So I don't have any at this time, um, agenda items. I, if I come up with something, I will email Rex and Maria. And so thank you, everyone.
Councilmember Ackerman?
Um, well, I, I do wanna thank, uh, Rex and the rest of the city staff, Dana and Michael, for your efforts on getting Zoom up and running. And, um, and, and here I am on this end of Zoom and it's, it's nice to be able to see you guys. I can hear you better than, um, I would if I had phoned in. So ho- hopefully the other people who have phoned or have been participating via Zoom are having the same experience. Um, so I think this is great. Um, like I said earlier, um, I have had a chance to briefly meet Justin Howard, the new executive director of Accra. And he gave us a report just of things going on in the, the, the greater community. Um, uh, bingo is a, is a big thing around here. They've got quite a robust bingo program. And, and so there's, there's a lot of, um, great activities going on in the community. I also went to, um, one of the meetings for the Amador County Tourism Committee, uh, maybe about a month ago. And, um, they have some brochures that we can have and um, our name, as far as, you know, the city of Plymouth is, is getting out there on behalf of them. They're, they're gonna be at the, and maybe it's already happened at this Bay Area Travel and Adventure Show. Um, where, you know, we're in, we're featured in these brochures along with the other cities, of course. Um, so that was kind of nice to hear that. Um, and then finally, I just wanna mention that um, I hope we can spread the word. I don't think there, I don't even know if anybody's left on Zoom now. Um, but the Amador County Tire Amnesty Mattress Drop Off and E-Waste Collection Event is happening on November sixth from eight to twelve. And, um, if there's anybody in the community that needs assistance, um, I know for me, if it wasn't for my husband, I certainly wouldn't be capable of getting a mattress. I wouldn't have a way of, of getting a mattress from my home to the, the, the collection site. So anyway, we've, we've got some ambassadors who, um, are, are willing to volunteer their, their time and their trucks to help people who, who might need help with that. Um, so I hope we can spread the word on that. And I hope the community will take advantage of that. And that's it.
Okay, Councilmember Amber Russo?
Um, I will just concur with, uh, my counterpart that this is amazing. I mean, it is really, really, really amazing. It works really well. You know, and like I say, I'm in a foreign country, so I'm, I'm, I'm doing this from a long ways away. And it's actually really nice to see this technology working so seamlessly. So thank you guys for all your hard work in getting this set up. Cause it sure made it a pleasure to be able to be a part of this meeting. Cause I think I would have pulled my hair out if I was on the phone. Just saying. So, yeah. Yeah, exactly. So, um, yeah, I know. So that's it. Um, future agenda item would be, you know, redundant safety access for Hawksview. Maybe.
Okay, and, um, I'm pretty much good right now. So I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Good night, guys.
Good night.
Good night, guys.